I'll be in nub.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Owens?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Selby?
Yeah.
Commissioner Collins? Who we know is not attending this evening. Commissioner Mann? Who I expect may be on his way. Commissioner Setson?
Here.
Commissioner Wixstrom?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Selby?
Tom, did that call you already?
Yes.
Okay. There you go, Mr. Rang.
We have a call. We have a motion for adoption of the agenda, please. So make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we're not in town yet.
Motion ready?
I'll second it.
All right, motion seconded adoption of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing? Ayes, ayes. All right, and that's yours.
Yes, sir, and I'm sorry, I did have a note from Commissioner Mann that he had a last-minute thing he needed to respond to, so he's not able to attend.
He won't be here?
Yes, sir.
We still have a call.
So, item 3A on the agenda is an introduction of a new employee.
Sir, this is Frank Lassen, who's one of our new officers. He came from the Sheriff's Department to come join us.
Go ahead, talk about yourself.
I'm Woody, this is Frank Lassen, 42. I have a beautiful bride of 16 years. We have sweet adoption dates. I also passed her, sourced her across the street. By 2020, I was able to reopen my dream of coming into law enforcement. And went through BLAT, joined on to the Derrick County Sheriff's Office. I was there for about a year and a half. And praise the Lord, he opened up some doors for me to come over to the town of Manio. Just super excited to be here, man, blessed by it, and looking forward to everything that the Lord does for us. But that's me in a nutshell.
We're excited to have you.
Well, welcome to Manio.
Thank you, sir.
I think you're gonna like this. We've got an excellent place to park.
Yes, sir. 100%.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, item 3B on your agenda is employee service recognition, and this is for Barry Wicker, for 10 years. Barry, you want to come up front with me?
So this says, "Presented to Barry Wicker in deep appreciation and heartfelt thanks for 10 years of dedicated and loyal service to the town of Manio. This, the 16th day of March, 2022."
Congratulations.
Thank you, Barry. Hold it up. Okay, Mr. Mayor, item 3C on the agenda is the West Side Stormwater Project update. And we have John and Mike, our friends from Albemarle Engineering, here to give us an update on what they have found with their surveys and modeling on the West Side Stormwater Project. Take it away, guys.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm John Delucia from Albemarle and Associates. I'd just like to say thank you to the town for allowing us to help you with these various projects that we have been over the last couple of years. And I'm liking the boost team, Mike Almore, and also the rest of the potential agents here at our firm. Mike is very, very good with drainage systems and pipe systems, and he's going to give you a little bit of an update on what we have found through modeling and some recommendations that we have to improve the drainage on the west side.
Siz.
It's great to be here.
Michelle? Is it Mike on?
Yeah, it was green, but it wasn't sticking up really well.
So if you don't want, could you pick up this a little bit louder, please?
Is this better?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks for having us. It's great to be here. I had several conversations today about, with people that recently here who love drainage, and I was glad to have that, because I do, too. We started looking at this with the town last summer. They brought us, and we walked this neighborhood, talked about what they were looking to accomplish, talked about what they had in their files, and started working on it. Started off doing field reconnaissance and looking at available data, drainage maps, while we were waiting for a survey, to get detailed survey on this project area.
Got on Agona, Sir Walter Raleigh to the traffic circle, and Simon Street from Agona to DOT all survey.
And, once we got, survey came in, we started setting up some SWIM files. SWIM's a stormwater management program developed by the EPA, and it's a very cumbersome but very powerful program. You get a lot of ability to analyze systems, see exactly how they're working, and develop different scenarios for them. And before we even started in that direction, one thing I found interesting was the drainage system over in this area, where we had a 24-inch pipe coming over here that drains about 65 acres to the north of that. Basically, a lot of from Elizabethan Inn is coming down through here. And at the same time, we've got equivalent 21-size pipe coming that's draining really our project area. And they're both connected to a 24-inch pipe. So we've obviously got a restriction right there. On top of it, the 24-inch pipe has slipped the wrong direction. But go up to a 30-inch, and everything outlets out here and goes down Sir Walter Raleigh. So immediately, when we set up, when we got the survey, we finalized our SWIM file on existing conditions, and it became very clear that the restriction that we knew existed was not only restricting back here, and restricting here, but we're actually seeing flow come back up through here. As this 24-inch pipe becomes inundated, we're actually seeing this portion of the drainage system becoming inundated from flow in that direction. So, we have like, we've taken, we've looked at numerous scenarios. First, we're looking to increase the outfall capacity here, starting with just increasing this pipe to a 30-inch to at least match downstream, and reworking a couple here to help get positive direction on it. That by itself doesn't do much. The 30-inch restriction pipe is, we've got about 150 cubic feet per second coming through here. We've modeled everything on a 10-year, 24-hour dynamic analysis. So, 6.3 inches of rainfall over 24 hours. And the nice thing about SWIM is it doesn't just look at something at a peak flow. SWIM accounts for ponding, for backing up. It really, we've actually analyzed the system over a three-day period from the start of rainfall beyond. So, we're able to see all this, and at best condition, this pipe might have a 30 CFS capacity. So, 150 and 30, we've got a lot of work to do to really improve this. Tried replacing everything with a 36 here that helped significantly, but still felt like we can do better. Problem is, we don't have any horizontal capacity to put a bigger pipe in, short of going to an elliptical pipe. And even that, it's only going to get minorly bigger. So, looking at things, we're coming through here, and we've got the town property here, and we thought, why don't we just separate the two systems? And go disconnect this from here, bring it through the town's property, and produce a second outlet that's going to that outfall ditch. That outfall ditch is plenty big. The outfall ditch is not the restriction. And we found that doing that, we actually had huge improvements to the system. So that's the direction we're moving in, disconnecting the system, increasing the videos that the town had done a couple of years ago on the pipe system, on Simon and Sir Wal- and Agona, I'm sorry. They show that some of the pipes clearly are compromised. They're not having, they themselves aren't impacting the, they may be impacting, but they're not causing the drainage issues we have in this area. But, so we certainly want to replace those as part of this project. So, we're going to be doing some pipe increases in sizes here, where we've got bad pipes, and looking to put in the new outfall. And that's where we find we're getting our best bang for our buck, in the overall improvements for the system. And if anyone has any questions?
Any questions from the board?
There's another drawing, and if Woody would put that up on the screen, it gives you an idea of the, what they're proposing. There you go.
So we may, we may actually pipe in this whole section of Agona. You've got a mixed bag with open systems and closed systems. Open systems are considered more environmentally friendly. They can have more capacity, but they require a lot more maintenance. And, you know, when we laid out the profile of the system, you can see where the system was going up and down, and up and down, and up and down. Some of that was pipes, maybe pipes that settled some, but a lot of it was just ditches filling in over time. We've got, this is, this is far from a good scenario there. You know, it's tight, it's running through side yards. So we'd certainly be looking to pipe that all the way through. Be replacing all of Simon Streets as well. Simon Street, the pipes were quite corroded, as shown through the videos. Corrugated metal. We're looking to do all HDPE. We could, we did investigate, go into an elliptical pipe to get a greater capacity, because everything's driven by the height of the pipes and getting cover over it. But with the elliptical pipes, they're, they're pretty much only available in concrete. Corrugated metal as well, but that's, no one uses corrugated metal anymore. And concrete, A is getting, is real expensive now, just like everything else, but concrete seems to be a little bit ahead of the game. And elliptical pipes are just not as commonly produced and available. So, seeing a time where simple things are becoming very hard to find, I don't want to try to be looking for elliptical concrete pipe in this environment right now.
I have a question.
Yes.
Once the piping starts, once you start putting new pipes, how long do that usually take?
That's going to depend a lot on the weather.
Well.
We do, I would normally say this would be maybe a three-month project. There are a couple of items that we need to narrow down in the final design of it, and one of them is being sanitary sewer laterals. We got to look at, we may need to be replacing some sanitary sewer laterals. That's going to extend, you know, it's going to be another, be another work item there. And, let's face it, if we get a lot of rain, it's not easy to be putting in drainage systems in the rain. So, three to four months is probably a good, a good number for a construction timeframe here.
Thank you.
Are you far enough ahead to give us maybe a timeframe, what we're talking from starting to maybe not finish, but getting started?
We currently have half the plans more or less completed. We, this was not, this concept was not originally thought about when we put together the proposal, and we don't have any survey in this area. So, we got a surveyor that, who's actually, these surveys are all backed up. He was authorized a couple of weeks ago, and he said next week he's going to be out there picking up survey and that. So once we get that, and we just finalized a couple of points with the town on how we want to do this, we would have plans done in a couple of weeks from that point. So, I would like to have the whole project completed from a design standpoint in the next month and a half to two months.
That should be good.
So this is an open system? Not a closed system?
Most of the pipe, most of our improvements would be open. There's some places where we would be, I mean, I'm sorry, they would be closed. There were some places where we would just be cleaning ditches, but this, for the most part, it's going to be a closed system.
Okay. And what's existing is, is now a combination of culverts through driveways and an open ditch? And then, and then it goes into another open ditch?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the orange in this, in these diagrams are, that's closed systems. The blue is open. And the dashed in orange is existing, that's going to remain, whereas the solid is what we're going to be replacing or culverting an open system.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir, for showing up.
Thank you.
And that's it. You have to go ahead.
I'm going to give Woody just a second to get the department head reports up.
Chief Assistant Manio, Police Department. I attended a juvenile prosecution council meeting, as well as a police advisory board meeting. During the police advisory board meeting, I had investigators Doug Moore and Tommy Corbin do a presentation, pretty much basic investigation from the start to the finish. I attended a Dare Day, actually Dare Days, sorry, plural, Dare Days meeting. Lieutenant Eiler attended a monthly investigator's meeting hosted by the Dare County Sheriff's Department, along with investigator Moore and Corbin. Lieutenant Eiler also instructed radar operator training at the Nagshead Police Department. Investigator Moore attended his NTOX recertification training. He also went to hostage negotiations training at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Edneyville. We had four K-9 requests to search for narcotics, two from the sheriff's office, one from State Highway Patrol, and then we did one ourselves. Investigator Corbin attended radar operator training at Nagshead PD, and he also conducted safety briefings on active shooter incidents for all of the town employees. Officer Deaton attended crime prevention through environmental design at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Salemburg. And Officer Land did his radar operator training, and Officer Grogan did LiDAR. We had 23 citations for February. We had 14 investigations. 13 of those investigations are closed and cleared. There's one that's still active and open. We had 1,588 self-initiated calls, 105 dispatched calls, for a total of 1,693 calls for February. And that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions for me?
I just have a question. I just was up in your station the other day for a meeting, and the thought occurred to me, is it fair to assume that at some point, we will need to maybe reassess our police department space?
Uh, yeah, we're getting a little crowded, but...
As we grow.
We're okay for right now, but in the future, yeah, we're, I think, everything's growing, you know, police department, the town. Every time you turn around, there's another house going up, so...
Apartments perhaps soon, so...
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to check with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good question, Ruth Jane. There is going to be a need for expansion in the future, and so we're going to start, need to start just thinking about, like you brought up, and where we're going. But he said he didn't need one now. I'm sure he'll want to expand pretty soon. See there, he gave me a thumbs up. He wouldn't say it.
Yeah, we'll need it.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Greetings from the waterfront again. The, our volunteers have been busy this month, last month, I guess. Weather's gotten better, so we built a new guardrail out on the lighthouse boardwalk to protect the new tide gauge there. And they also got busy and built us a new bike rack for the marina. So we're hoping this wooden one will last longer than the metal ones in all the floodwater we get down there. Sailing camp's filling up still. We're still getting a couple kids a day sailing up for that, so we're looking for a pretty good summer still on that. We also had a contractor rebuild the stand or the base for our pump, for the pump-out station. So it actually raises it up above floodplain, basically, and just improved the look of that site there, too. We had five boats come in, the marina, transit boats come in the marina this past month for about $2,400 in revenue, and still people are staying around three or four nights. So that's good for the marina and good for the businesses around the waterfront there. And that's all I have. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Josh O'Brien, Water and Sewer Department. Starting with the service installations and operations billing snapshot for the month of February, numbers show that in February, there was a nice mix of a lot of different things. Staff repaired a water main leak for the hydrant at Queen Elizabeth and Sir Walter Raleigh that happened during a snowstorm in the middle of the night. Thankfully, we were able to isolate the main as it was just supplying the hydrant, and come back after during normal work hours to make the repair. Also completed, just going to highlight just a few more on this report, new house water meter installations, meter replacements due to age, MXU transmitter, MXU transmitter and meter box maintenance. Staff are continuing to strip and paint hydrants. We had two sewer service lateral connections repaired, three cleanouts raised, along with 38 811 locates for February. We can come to the next slide. This slide here shows a few things I'd like to highlight, as far as, the first report on the snapshot, of course, doesn't show our preventive maintenance. Through our preventive maintenance program, we have work orders assigned daily, weekly, monthly, annually, and so forth. Through our SCADA system, which is our computer system that monitors all of our pump stations along with our wastewater treatment plant, we're able to see trends, along with the preventive maintenance. One of these trends was we noticed over East Hammock Pump Station, that one of the pumps was starting less, that runtime was higher. By doing these inspections, you know, weekly inspections, we're able to see this. And happened to be that the cause of this was in the picture to the right, showed that the check valve was not operating properly, and of course, there's no window for us to see inside these pumps. Turns out that what we're looking at here is just a conglomeration of things that should not have been flushed in the sewer system. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to include a graphic that we normally include in our annual wastewater performance report for the collection system and the wastewater treatment system, that so elegantly states that wipes clog pipes. And this is just something that I like to reiterate any chance I get, as I know many of the commissioners, mayor have heard me say before, we've made videos, but this problem is not just isolated to the town of Manio, clearly. This problem is anywhere there's sewers, anywhere there's, you know, even private sewer systems. We know even in septic tanks and drain fields, you know, these items that are considered flushable just don't break down in water. So, as you can see, this mass here just filled up the volume of the inside of that pipe, and the check valve, which normally closes for the pump to properly operate, wouldn't close all the way. So, we thought we had to replace the check valve, so the guys broke it apart, ended up being that and cleaned it out. So I thought this was a good opportunity to include this graphic, and of course, we'll keep putting this graphic out there as form of public education. Wanted to also point out that this information is all available on the town of Manio's webpage under the Water and Sewer page under Sewer. So all this information would be found very easily by going to our website, navigating to the sewer information page, and then under that, there's actually pages, one for sewer service line blockage, which goes through all the steps, emergency contact information if a property, residence or commercial becomes clogged, what number to call, how to get us out there after hours. Also, besides wipes, part of our public education that we're required to get out there is for fats, oils, and grease, also known as FOG. So, again, with fats, oils, and grease, we have a fats, oils, and grease page for public information on our website, what you shouldn't flush, what you can and what you can't flush. Also on our website is a page specifically for flushable wipes. So, we just, you know, want to make sure people know what is safe to flush, what is not safe to flush, and if there's ever any questions, you know, we have the information on our website, and of course, it's out there with a simple internet search, too. There's horror stories, and if anybody wants an interesting search through the internet, just type in fatberg instead of iceberg, and you can see what fats, oils, and grease and the accumulation of wipes is done. Actually, in London, they removed a mass so large that in their sewer systems, we're talking, you know, 10 feet diameter pipes or larger. This mass accumulation of grease, fats, oils, and grease, and wipes completely backed up their sewer system. And it's not just London, but all over the world. So it's, it's a problem in our sewer systems. It's my job, people like me that have this job, just to help remind us what not to flush in the toilet, and it's not a trash can. So, unless there's any questions, that's all I have for the month of February.
Josh, I have one. You gave a really excellent report on water quality in Shallow Bag Bay several months ago. How often do you conduct those searches for contaminated water? Do you do it on a monthly basis, or yearly, or what?
Yes, sir. That actually, in what, that video, what the mayor's, was talking about is actually part of our permit sampling program, and we sample those weekly. Barry and I go out with maritime using, Barry's been helping us for years. But that is conducted weekly, and that is part of our plant, the sewer plant permit, in which we have to monitor four parameters, which is pH, salinity, temperature, and dissolved oxygen around the wastewater outfall leaving the wastewater treatment plant. So by those four parameters, we use all that data, we program them into our monthly reports, which is submitted to the state with DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality, and then also to the EPA. So with that information, as part of our permit renewal process, and of course, the permit is a federal permit regulated by the state, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MPDES permit. So that information is then accessed by environmental engineers on the state's part as part of permit process, in which they can see any sort of trends that happen outside of just the sampling that we conduct daily at the plant. So at the plant, not just for Shallow Bag Bay, we're sampling as part of our permit daily, and we're talking close to 3,000 samples per year, just to make sure that we're meeting permit guidance. So hopefully that answers that.
That's plenty of samples, then. I tell you, the reason I asked the question...
Yes, sir.
I got in a pretty heated argument the other day. This gentleman was talking about how dirty Shallow Bag Bay was, and I said, "Not so. You don't know what you're talking about." And so, I might have gotten you in trouble, because I invited him to go along with you one day and check it out with the town, and arrange it with you, that he'd go out with you when you take your sample, because he was talking about how dirty the water was in the bay, and I told him it didn't report that, because you send all your reports to Raleigh or Washington somewhere. I know they're certified up there, and Shallow Bag Bay is clean.
Yes, sir. As far as the wastewater treatment plant...
That's why I was referring, connection to wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir. We don't like to brag, but we have not had a permit violation...
Well, I was bragging one year.
Well, thank you, sir, but we have not had a permit violation with the wastewater treatment plant in over 10 years. So we take a lot of pride in that. But again, when I talk about preventive maintenance, and of course, the board's support with our budget and these projects like the Shallow Bag Bay Pump Station, also this action plan that we've been working with permit parameters and other projects going forward, those all add up to help. add up to help the plant operate how it should, and along with the sewer collection system as well with our pump stations to make sure, you know, the number one thing, the most important thing for us is to keep the sewage in the pipes, you know, allowed to flow by gravity to the pump stations, the pump stations can come, pump it to the plant, and of course, for the plant to operate properly, so we can make sure that as it was designed, all the pumps, all the motors, all the spinning disc aerators and all that stuff is operational so we can achieve treatment as EPA and the state make sure that we do. So thank you. Any other questions?
Wait, Josh, really quickly. So, but the water that's treated around the water treatment plant is specific to the runoff from the water, from the water treatment plant, right? Like, you're not testing for hydrofluorocarbons? That would be something that would be, you know, runoff from rivers upstream in North Carolina? Like, you're not testing for chemical runoff from hog farms that happen to end up in the Shallow Bag Bay due to farming practices in North Carolina? You're testing for things that are specific to the wastewater treatment plant's water runoff, correct?
Correct, yes. Those four parameters that I named and all the sampling that we do at the wastewater treatment plant is part of our plant permit, all related to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Well, it's great that you're doing your job really well.
Yeah.
Just wish we could get the rest of the state on board. We are the runoff coast.
Thank you.
Carl Woody, the Technology Department. So I always start my slide with the cybersecurity training that we had last month. It was navigating the App Store. Everybody thinks the App Store, the apps are safe. Well, there's been incidents where an app gets approved and it's not safe. People download it on their phones and then they get compromised. So the biggest thing to know is know your App Store. While mobile app stores do their best to screen for malicious apps, they do not catch them all. So keep that in mind. Reduce exposure. If you do not, if you have an app you haven't used in a while, remove it from your phone. Get it off your phone. And the big thing is watch for red flags. So if you're looking at an app to download and you see it's only got 50 people that have ever downloaded it, eh, you might want to think twice before you download it. If it's got thousands of downloads, you know, positive, you know, rank or positive views and everything, it might be fine. But just think twice when you're going to download an app, so. But that was basically what the training covered for last month. All right, so we've finished six small videos for the virtual tour on the kiosk of the lighthouse. So what we wanted to do with these videos is we wanted to recreate like a living history. So basically, we recreated a keeper outfit, and we had somebody dressed in it, and we created these videos, and it was six videos altogether on the first floor of the lighthouse, second floor, how they got drinking water, the Fresnel lens, the outhouse, and the pilings that were used in the, in the, to build the lighthouse. The, here I got an example. These videos are only like 30 seconds long, so they're not really big, long videos. But as they go through that virtual tour, they can click on these videos, and this is one of them.
Back when I lived here, this floor was divided into four rooms, a living room, kitchen, storeroom, and coalroom. No fancy separate lighthouse keeper's house like Boddy Idol Light or Cape Hatter's Lighthouse. This one building is where the lighthouse keeper and the assistant lighthouse keeper lived and worked.
So it's just a quick 30-second video of what it looked like, because right now, if you go to the lighthouse, that's not what it looked like back in the day. So we just wanted to just give sort of like a living history type stuff for the lighthouse so people will know. That's all I got. Any questions?
Good evening. Frankie Woodley, Public Work Director. For the month of February, we assembled and installed a Shadow Bag project sign for the lift stations. We installed a new changing station in the men's bathroom at the Magnolia Pavilion. Replaced the fence, removed the rear over tide, trimmed some limbs, and cleaned up underneath the Christmas tree area. We trimmed hedges and removed trees from behind the tranquil house, and we continue removing trash and debris along the causeway. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, so for the Planning Department, Park met earlier in the month and reviewed renovation plans for the old fire station on Budley Street and a new residential construction at 302 Haven Creek Lane. Just a little bit of detail on the fire station. The new owners that took ownership of the property last year are, they are doing a complete renovation and adding more of a residential component on the second floor of the building. But they are taking the building back to the WPA style of when it was originally constructed. So they are removing the Tudor look, and it'll be a white stucco when, like, just like when it was originally constructed. So that's some really interesting, really interesting project. The Planning Board met and reviewed the following. You all are aware that the leadership group for the Comprehensive Plan, the Planning Board and Commissioner Borland, met and reviewed the draft visions and goals, and then they met again. They spent an additional four hours reviewing that document, which is great to have their dedicated interest, because the more they look into that, the better it is for us. The Planning Board also reviewed a special use permit application for a subdivision at Zero Bowser Town Road. That will be before you all at your May 4 meeting due to scheduling conflicts. They reviewed a special use permit application for a mixed-use residential commercial building at 100 Old Tom Avenue. That will be before you all at your April 6 meeting. They reviewed an application for a change of use at 716 South Highway 64. That's Big Ow's, and that will be before you all at your April 6 meeting. Of course, in my report included an update that you all would receive an update tonight on the West Side Stormwater Project, which you have heard. Monday, we held a public meeting for the Comprehensive Plan, which was well-attended. We got great feedback. I have met with the consultants, and they are taking all of those conversations into consideration at this point, and we are gathering comments. So if you are interested in reviewing the draft plan and making comments, please send them to me. That's not just for the board, it's also for everyone in the community. You can email me your notes, and I upload them to a Dropbox where our consulting team reviews them. The Davis Lot, improvement, construction is underway. We are expecting that the stone that will be placed underneath the pavers will arrive either late this week or early next week. So we'll see some activity here soon. We're just waiting on that delivery of the stone. And then last week, we held the Town Common Phase 2 pre-construction meeting. I did issue a notice to proceed, and we expect that AR Chesson, the construction company doing that project, will be on site beginning next week. And there's a picture here of the Davis Lot in its current condition, which will look different in the next few days. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Michelle Buntz, Program Manager. You guys have seen this before. This is that lovely long word, the Economic Development Implementation Plan. This is what the core team of the DAC has been working with. They have done, oops, they have done a really, really great job. They have done some hard work, had some really great discussion, and this is just really the start of just some, just awesome conversation and getting to know the business owners a lot better. COVID unfortunately did slow that down for a little while, but we're excited to kind of get back and get back in the groove and get back in the community. One of the things that we saw in one of our presentations was involvement builds commitment. So we hope to build much more involvement from the community with this. This is an exciting little, little plan. It's actually a fun one. So there are action items, and right now, they will be working on their next step is measurements for these. So measurements actually will help us look at, is this working? Is it meeting its deadline, a reasonable timeframe, and things of that nature? And right now, the state has looked at this, and they like the overall direction of this already in its state. But of course, we'll tweak this a little bit at our next core meeting, the next DAC meeting, which is March 23 at 4:00. But I wanted to keep kind of putting in front of you, so you know, you recognize this, because it will come before you a little bit later. But, next slide. Obviously, we've been working on special events. Special Events Committee had a meeting on February 1st. They reviewed all the events that the town has, town-sponsored events. We reviewed the New Year's Eve event at that meeting. We also talked about training for our Special Events Committee members. That was really exciting, and a lot of them have given feedback on the different trainings they want to attend. They've already been signed up for their first one, which is great, and it kind of coincides with the training that staff is doing. And then obviously, we're planning for Downtown Market, Dare Days, and July 4th. There's a lot going on, but some exciting stuff that we'll be sharing with you. There is a poster on the, on the counter for you, for those who did not have one, and they'll be going out in the community. There's a couple of them already out, but they'll be going out soon. We have actually have had over 40 applications already for this market, which is more than what we had last year, and the deadline's not till April 25th. So this is real exciting news. You know, there's a lot of people interested. We do have spots. We have, we could have up to about 40 spots at the park even under its current, you know, construction status, but we will get them in there, and we will have a great market. And we're going to have an opening day for our market, not just day opens, we're going to have an opening day for our market. So stay tuned. Next slide. And in the public relations thing, well, Woody kind of set the bar a little high here. So we did film the next episode of the Manio Minute, which is out, and we already discussed Downtown Market, so we have that to share with you guys tonight.
Well, Carl's Fresnel lens was invented in 1823. It was called the invention that saved a million ships.
Wow, that's fascinating.
It is fascinating.
Woody, who's your friend?
This is Keeper Barry.
Hello, I'm the keeper of Marsh's Lighthouse. But I got to get going, I got to check the lenses.
Okay.
Well, now you're here. This is the Manio Minute. My name's Carl Woody.
And I'm Michelle Buntz. I had no idea I was late.
Well, you know, it's still a little chilly out, but things are heating up in the town.
And speaking of, we have a lot of construction projects going on in the town of Manio, including one here at the Town Common. In addition to this lovely trellis and our park benches and the green space, we will be adding restaurants this year to the Town Common.
Here at the Davis Lot, we have a lot of planned improvements for this lot, like a lighted walking path, benches and chairs.
There's your friend Barry again, and he's texting. Is that a little awkward?
I got to talk to him about that.
You might notice some construction behind me. And Barry, again. The construction is our pump station here at George Washington Creek Park. But have no fear, the Downtown Market will be here at George Washington Creek Park every Saturday beginning May 14 through September 17 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. And also, speaking of construction, you want to know more, right?
Absolutely.
We have plans underway for Dare Days, Days, plural, and July 4th, so stay tuned.
Now let's cut to Barry about our new interactive kiosks.
I'm just not sure about Barry.
Whew. I'm Barry, lighthouse keeper at Roanoke Marsh's Light. Just want to let you know that we're going to have three interactive kiosks here, one here at the Roanoke Marsh's Light, another at the Manio Maritime Museum, and the third at Pea Island Cookhouse. Whew. I'm Barry with the Manio Minute. Good job, good job.
Thanks, Carl. Stay off that phone.
My bad.
The phones, yeah, got to talk about that.
Thanks.
These are just a really fun thing to do, and just kind of gives a little brief overview of things that are going on in the town, just kind of in a fun, lightweight. People get a lot of things on Facebook and websites and stuff, but this is just a really fun little project that we, if you have any ideas for them, please let us know. We're always happy to hear them. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Michelle. Very good.
Yes, sir. Item four on your agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
Good evening. My name is Bill Miller. My wife Mary and our daughter Jenna are here. Mary and I have four children, three boys and Jenna, and one grandson. We all live here in the Outer Banks, and Jenna resides in Manio, who does one of our other boys. I wanted to talk to you tonight about the Magnolia Pavilion in particular. I'm wearing this mask because I had cancer two years ago, went through treatment, actually two years ago today, and was in a wheelchair, couldn't walk. Was told when I got to hospital I had two weeks, or two weeks to two months to live and if I hadn't gotten treatments. And it's kind of a miracle of modern medicine I'm here, but you know, from adverse situations, positive things come out. And one of the things that, you know, I'd like to do with the remaining years of my life is basically to invest, make investment in my family and the community that we reside, and do things to give back. And one of the things that I realized going through what I've gone through is that when I, I had the COVID vaccines, and I found out from a doctor, oncologist, that basically 50% of cancer patients don't develop the antibodies to protect them from COVID. So I wear this, you know, N95 mask. I don't go in places typically, this is very unusual for me. I stay outside, I stay in the house. And I like to get out, and I like to interact with people. And I think there's a lot of other people like me who are survivors that would appreciate the opportunity to interact with family in a nice, friendly, comfortable environment. So, you know, my wife was interested in doing something, investing in a store or something, and I got the idea that, you know, there's really nothing around, if, very few places that I can go and be outside. You have a beautiful covered pavilion that to me is underutilized. And so my proposal is to lease that from the town, to renovate it, and to make it a really comfortable facility for people to, you know, whether they have underlying conditions or they just want to visit the town, that we can put a facility in there that they can truly enjoy. It would be a business, but an inviting business for the community. So with that, I have a very short proposal I'd like to leave with you. I'd like to read a portion of it, just to sort of give you a sense. I did get a, Melissa and Michelle provided me with the RFP you'd sent out a while ago. And I was a little late on that, we were a little late responding, but really weren't aware of it at the time. So our proposal is to lease the Magnolia Pavilion in its entirety.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. So our family, the Miller family, through Betty's Corner Market LLC, and we call it Betty's Corner, an entity that we intend to form, respectfully proposes to lease the entirety of the Magnolia Pavilion located here in town, obviously, under a long-term lease. Description of our business, the initial business of Betty's Corner Market will be to provide the community with a family-friendly, convenient, and comfortable environment in which to purchase and consume packaged foods, beverages, local art, and gifts, especially items. Packaged foods will include fine cheeses, meats, chips, crackers, sandwiches, desserts, and other items. We plan to upgrade the pavilion space with comfortable furnishings, added greenery, decoration, board games, books, and other items. We plan to create an inviting, comfortable, and aesthetically pleasing gathering place for families and friends, four-legged friends, too. Betty O'Brien, grandmother of our Miller children, is the inspiration for the name, Betty's Corner. Betty, a native of North Carolina, spent many years enjoying life with her grandchildren and family in Manio. She loved spending time on the downtown waterfront, visiting shops and restaurants. Economic factors. Initially, Betty's Corner will provide three jobs with the goal to expand. Betty's Corner will be capitalized with an initial investment of $50,000. This funding will be used to make space upgrades, purchase furnishings, equipment, inventory, and operate its business. Additional capitalization of the business will be made as needed and as the business grows. While we cannot predict revenue generated by Betty's Corner, we can state our objective, which is to establish and maintain a viable business which delivers a family-friendly atmosphere with quality goods and merchandise for enjoyment of the community for many years to come. The tenant will be financially responsible.
The tenant will be financially responsible when we maintain the pavilion space. Activation of the space. Betty's Corner is envisioned as an inviting, family-friendly, community gathering place, which promotes the vibrancy of the downtown business, artistic and music communities, and an updated, comfortable venue which services the need, or serves the needs and wants of locals and visitors. The tenant intends to operate its business 10 months of the year with a limited schedule due to weather conditions in January, February. Compatibility. Betty's Corner and the enhanced pavilion space will complement the surrounding occupants of artistic communities and businesses by offering a comfortable gathering space at which locals and visitors can gather, relax, and recharge before or after venturing on to visit neighboring businesses and friends. The business will be an asset to the community, adding to the vitality of the downtown Manio waterfront community and assisting in encouraging more visitors and overall spending in the surrounding shops and restaurants. Flexibility. Betty's Corner will welcome use of the pavilion by the community for special events, including use during Bluegrass Festival, First Friday events, and other special events held in the downtown. I conclude, conclude there. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Mr. Miller, I wish you had gotten on the regular agenda, which you could easily have done with your project. But it's very innovative and it's dead space. And I guess you, from what I understand, you've been working with Melissa already.
We've, we've had conversations, yes, sir.
Melissa, will you pursue this if the board is not objectionable to see, get this thing kicked off because they got a good idea?
I, I agree that it is a good idea, Mr. Mayor. So back in the fall, while Mr. Ayers was still here, RFP was issued and there was one respondent to it. We have been working on a lease for those, for those individuals, although I have not been in direct contact with them. Robert Hobbs from the town attorney's firm and I have been working on just things that needed to be addressed in the lease agreement anyway. And I did hear back from Mr. Hobbs last week about that. But I, I think there's some obligation on my behalf to follow up with the people that responded.
And, and, and I apologize, Mr. Miller, because this should have been taken up on a, other than public comment, to give you plenty of time to present your case. It should have been at a different venue, but it's not. So that's why I was giving you more time to explain your situation.
Thank you so very much.
And I, I, I think this could behoove Manio greatly. This is what it was intended to be in the beginning. It didn't work out. There's some problems there when the pavilion was first built. And it was, it was busy, I can tell you that. But I don't know what happened down the road. So I would like to see us pursue it to, at least it's, see how far we can go.
We'd appreciate that.
I don't mean, I mean the board. I hope the board certainly agrees with me on this because it's a project that would involve the whole downtown Manio on that corner.
I'll keep moving along and I'll follow up with the Millers as appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on then.
The next item on your, oh, I'm sorry. Are there additional public comments? Yeah.
Hi, my name's Corey Hemerite. I have the Bluegrass Shop downtown. I'm actually located right behind the pavilion. So I just wanted to come and express my support for the Millers' idea. I've been down there eight years. And, you know, we had the pirate boat that was out of there for several years. And that was so successful and we hated to see that leave. But since that's been gone, that space has just been dead. And I know you, a lot of you remember Magnolia Grill that was in that location. And I wasn't, I didn't have a business at that time. But everyone that's still there from those days said, man, business really was booming when we had Magnolia Grill. So we'd really like to see something in there to draw people to that end of Manio. And, you know, I can't speak for everyone down there, but I can say, I have spoke with all the businesses and everyone thought it was a great idea. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. But I'm sure if you want something signed, everyone, every business in that loop there would be happy to sign, showing their support for the, for the idea. But that's all I have to say on that. I just, just think it's a good idea. And it's such a prime space in downtown Manio and it just sits there. And it also is, you know, kids hang out there at night and that's been going on since I've been there. And they vandalize. And I know you, you guys are well aware of that. But, and on a total different topic I'll bring up real quick, I just would like to bring up the concrete walkway, the road through there. I know you're all very well aware of that. Someone fell today out there. It's almost a daily thing. Someone almost trips on that concrete out there. And it's been an issue for seven years. I know there's some, some weird things with that and I don't understand it. But it, you know, it, it does need to be addressed eventually, the, the road through there. So, thank you.
Are there additional comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Saja. I am a member of the Ukrainian community here on the Outer Banks. First and foremost, I would like to apologize for the way I look. My friend just told me that I need to come here and hand something to the mayor. And I was naive enough thinking that's exactly what's going to happen. So I don't have a speech. I obviously not prepared. It, I was informed that I need to show up here an hour ago. I'm just going to make it short and sweet. Like I said, I'm a member of this community ever since 2015. I volunteered a lot here, including places like Dare Literacy Council, Friends of Youth, and churches, and many other places. And I understand that we're a small community, but I do believe that we can make great things. Apologize. So as you may know, the atrocities that are happening right now in Ukraine, a place where I come from and a place where my family lives and the families of all of our members of this community who couldn't just sit and watch what's going on. So our community got together and we organized an informal group called OBX Ukraine Support. We didn't have enough time as the things unfold to create a formal nonprofit. So we found a nonprofit in Virginia Beach and made a partnership with them. We found local organizations on the ground in Ukraine who need help right now and who are facing, obviously, a huge humanitarian crisis, the worst ever since World War II. And we paired with the official nonprofit on the, in Virginia Beach called Tidewater Ukrainian School, who are raising money, and communicating with, like I said, local organizations that we personally know on the ground in Ukraine who currently need help. And I just wanted to address this community. And I'm sure you know what's going on. But I just wanted to bring this up and present this as an opportunity to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm praying for, we're all praying for Ukraine. And Russia, everyone, praying for everyone that it all stops.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to be heard at public comment period? All right, we'll close public comment period. All right, Melissa.
The next item on your agenda is item five, new business. Item A is resolution of solidarity with the people of the Ukraine. And I'll read the resolution, Mr. Mayor. Whereas on February 24th, 2022, Russian President Vladimir Putin authorized an unprovoked attack in Ukraine. Shortly thereafter, Russian forces began missile and artillery strikes on some of Ukraine's major cities, including its capital Kiev. And whereas Russians attack, Russia's attack on the Ukraine has resulted in the unnecessary loss of life, the displacement and flight of countless Ukrainian citizens, and the destruction of property and infrastructure. And whereas the town of Manio stands with the people of the Ukraine as they fight to defend their country from Russia's invasion. And whereas the people of the Ukraine are inspiring the world with their incredible heroism, bravery, and resilience as they defend their homeland in the face of overwhelming aggression and military force. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners for the town of Manio does hereby stand in solidarity with the people of the Ukraine and encourages its residents to stand in solidarity with the people of the Ukraine. And be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners for the town of Manio joins the world in a call for peace, including Russian citizens protesting their government's actions. We are grateful to the people of Europe who are opening their homes to hundreds of thousands of Ukrainian families forced to flee their country. Our hearts and prayers remain with the people of the Ukraine.
Thank you, Melissa. I wish we could do more. I wish we could do a lot more, but we're not and we can't. I will add these two little features that you don't know about. The town board has lit up the front of the offices out here with blue and gold, your, your flag emblem. And you'll notice the lights on as you go out. You won't see them because it's got to be dark. But we, we lit up the front of the building in blue and gold. And I will add a little something else. If you look at my house on the corner, I've got a Ukrainian flag on my front porch. They got a barbaric, aggressive maniac over there. I wish somebody could do something with him. I, I can't say enough bad about him. And I'm talking about Putin. Sad. But we're certainly in sympathy with you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a framed copy of this resolution. Would you like to present it?
You can. I'm not into that stuff. You know, I'm not. I'm a rare mayor. I don't ride motorcades, I don't make speeches, and I don't like to be seen too much. So bear with me. All right. Thank you for coming. I wish you much luck. Mayor comments? I don't have any comments. Betty? Ruth Jane?
Just to double check, the name of the, the donation site is, it's the Outer Banks Ukraine Support? That's where they would find?
No, we partner.
You partner with the Tidewater Ukrainian School? Okay, okay. No, I don't have any comments.
Sheri?
Just a quick, I wanted to thank the Planning Board and Town Manager Dickerson for the hard, hard work that they have done on the comprehensive plan. It's, they have drilled down so deeply in it, in the details of it, and has, have spent hours on it. And I know that we are guided by Stuart, who is a consultant. But really, nobody is better able to assess land use and the, and all the components of the comprehensive plan than the people who live here, love it here, call it home, know the history, live the history. So I so appreciate the hard work that all of you have done on it. It, it will make it a living document for all of us. So thank you all. Planning Board and Melissa.
Thank you.
All right. I, I would like to add too, we've been talking about a transportation committee. I think we had one and have had one for many years. I'm not familiar with it at all, who's on it, how often they meet, or anything. And I'd like to suggest tonight, in closing, that we reemploy, reinvent the transportation committee and ask Sheri if she would head it up, which I have that authority to. And we'll try to get a transportation committee started as Ruth Jane's been interested in and Sheri too, and see where we go with it. That's about all I can say, is see where we go with it and what happens.
Thank you. I would be honored to, to, to do that.
All right.
Can I add something then?
Yeah.
I did have a chance to talk to our town attorney today as he just let me know what his role was as a new commissioner. And we did talk about some transportation situations. So maybe that would be a good, everything you shared with me about low and high-risk miscellaneous situations, you'd really benefit from that. And I mean, we all would whenever we have the time to talk about that. It was a very fruitful conversation, just about what, what truly is possible and what maybe wouldn't happen or could happen. I mean, I know everybody says there's nothing possible, but there's always a way, right?
I agree. Or we will make a way, right?
That's right. Someone will.
All right, we're going to close on a good note.
All right.
So we have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, first, we, I think we need to formally adopt that resolution.
Okay, yeah, I do too. Let's do it, put it in form.
If somebody would.
Somebody make a motion that we, I don't know how to word it, that we kind of promote or start, start thinking about a tran, a new transportation committee with Sheri as chairman.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I, I was talking about the resolution for the, in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. We need to adopt that.
We didn't do it, did we? No, we got to, yeah. Let's have a motion on solidarity for the Ukraine people.
Move approval.
Second. All right, been moved in second that we approve the resolution, solidarity of people of Ukraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I seem to have it. Okay. Let's go on, let's, I think maybe we need, we need to have another one on this transportation committee to make it formal. Would that be in, be in, would that be in order or not? Or can we just appoint a transportation committee?
I don't think you're appointing them tonight necessarily. I mean, you were just talking about.
No, we're not, we're not appointing tonight.
Yeah, so I, I think you could wait till then. But I'd want to look at your ordinances. I, I know that last year there were some, there was some ordinance language about different committees and I'd want to.
We've had a trans, or they have had a transportation committee. I'm, I'm not familiar with it, but I know it's been one.
And it's, it's not abnormal for boards to create committees without an ordinance provision doing that. But I wanted to, I'd like to make sure that there isn't something in there that says you had to do it.
Let's do that. And you report back to the next meeting.
I will.
Okay. All right. Anything else come before the board? Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All right, we, we are motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I seem to have it. We meet.